The Honorable Terry Hickey is in presiding over the meeting.
Roll call please, Ms. Clerk.
Michael Chandler.
Here.
Kell Crane.
Here.
Jordan DeLong. Tabitha Denny.
Here.
Terry Hickey.
Here.
Terry Hodges.
Here.
Dusty Maple.
Here.
Kenny Smith.
Yeah.
Tommy Freidy.
Here.
Michael Woodley.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, your pardon, Mr. Mayor.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just give you thanks today. Thank you for life, Lord. Thank you, God, for this time that we get to come together. Lord, help us all, God, to make sound and right decisions that will best benefit the people of this county, and we praise you and give you glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Stand for the plate.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, number five minutes of commission meeting on June eighteenth. I need a motion to approve or disapprove.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Crane made a motion to approve. Mr. Woodley seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Approve Committee A report, Mr. Crane.
All righty. Committee A meeting on July third, two thousand and twenty-four. Roll call. All members were present. First line of business was approved disproved bid on remodel of the Health Department grant. Motion was made by Tabitha Denny to accept the bid from Noah Robert for two hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars, seconded by Terry Hodges. Roll call with all members in favor. I'd like to put that in the form of a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
Open may I ask a question on that?
District.
The days to do that is a hundred and fifty days.
There are fifty days to complete.
Yes.
Yes.
And the other contractor had sixty days.
Well, if you notice, I don't have mine handy, but off the top of my head, one of them had sixty days, but I think he was what, fifty or seventy thousand dollars higher than that other one there. And the Health Department, Ms. Angela is here, and she can answer any questions that you might have with it there. But that's his time and dollar amount was...
I assume Mr. Smith's question is why are they giving more time versus...
And honestly, the architect was concerned with the sixty day timeframe. He said that it was very unrealistic for them to complete a project in sixty days. Every other timeframe was either one fifty or two ten. So we do think the other bidder was a little under what he should have quoted for the job.
You should have a bid sheet there.
Did he quote that he could get it done in sixty days?
It's the first one. It's HD Homes, and it's on the bottom there. It says, yes, he said sixty days.
Well, he stated, so the contractors are the ones stating the date. That's what I thought.
Correct.
But I mean, won't be no problem with the money. I mean, the money will still be...
No, it's through a grant.
It's grant money, a hundred percent grant.
This is a hundred percent reimbursable.
I mean, it's not a deadline to have it done than what you're saying.
There is a deadline, but the hundred and fifty days is going to be fine in that deadline. Yes, sir.
And if you don't have it done in that timeframe, they do charge him a certain... So many dollars per day if he's not complete.
And it's under budget.
Pre-bid, uh, what was it? Did the engineer bid the job? I'm sure he did.
Um, so this is the pre-bid, like everyone that came to the pre-bid is the ones that turned in the bids for this. Um, we're looking at, it was two hundred thousand under budget at this point in time?
Like five hundred and fifty thousand was the dollar amount, or in that neighborhood
It's a little over five.
What was projected by the engineer.
That's what we had.
Because he likes to fail over when he saw...
We were sitting there very quietly with our hands together when they announced the numbers. Uh, but we do think, you know, there may be some things that come into play as far as the bilge pump, things like that, um, that have had to be replaced, I think, twice in the last six months or so. Um, and so if they're, um, I know that Mayor Sullivan had asked them about rerouting some lines and things like that. So that money could be used towards those things in order to get the plumbing up to where it needs to be.
With the grinder pump where it, with its location now, they've had problems with it before, and we wanted to talk with the City of Spencer to see if something can be worked out too.
Because where it sits, all the rain just really just falls right into that, so it just causes all kinds of problems.
Packs up a lot, does it not?
It does, yes.
Uh, the engineer, have they worked with this contractor before?
That I'm not sure.
I don't think so.
So they did require a pre-bid meeting. They had to come and look at the building, um, and that was the week before, I think, bids were due. Uh, Mayor Sullivan was there.
I think ten days.
We had a huge turnout. We were really surprised at how many came out, but they inspected all of the building and the work that was to be done. And the engineers, um, from the architectural firm, they actually completed the drawings that was submitted for all of these pre-bids as well. So engineers have looked at the building and what needs to be done and gave them those specs.
Any more questions?
I don't want to have, thank you.
We've got a motion on the floor. Second, they roll call, please.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kell Crane.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Maple. Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carried.
All right, next line was old business. We had no old business that night, and then we moved on to new business. We had Ms. Hunter come for the senior citizen grant. A motion was made by Jordan DeLong to approve Ms. Hunter to go forward with the hundred percent grant for the senior center. This was seconded by Terry Hickey and all members in favor. I don't think we have to...
This building was a twenty-four by twenty-four.
Yeah.
Was the size of it there, and it's addition to put on the back so that the seniors can have exercise classes in the building. And this is a grant that is going to overcome development. District.
I'd like to make a motion for, to approve for her to go forward with the grant.
I'll second.
Come on in there, everybody.
Chandler, second. Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kell Crane.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Maple.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carried.
Next was water heater at the jail. Mayor Sullivan presented to the board that the jail is in need to replace a water heater. A new replacement water heater will cost sixty-eight, excuse me, six thousand eight hundred dollars. Mayor Sullivan is still waiting on prices for an instant hot water heater. A motion was made by Tabitha Denny to go forward with the purchase of a water heater for six thousand eight hundred dollars, unless a lower cost option will be available with an instant hot water heater, seconded by Terry Hickey. Roll call with all members in favor.
Got any updates on that, David?
Updates, uh, natural gas has still not came and gave me an answer yet, so we need to...
Need to kind of table that until we get an answer from them?
To table that would be, would be fine there, or just let it die for lack of support at this time.
Well, either or.
Which one?
It's under the ten thousand dollar mark, so we won't have to bring it up again, unless the instant hot water is going to cost more.
Well, that's true, and I think, and this is, I don't know what natural gas is going to charge, but for the repairs, or well, to put one in, it's going to be somewhere about twenty-four hundred for, I think, for the heater, and then, I'm not sure exactly, eight hundred maybe for the, uh, labor to get it into there and get it rerouted.
Having the gas put in.
Yeah, having to redo the water lines where necessary there. But I don't want you to hold me to that because until I get a real number, I don't want to, I'm just getting you, giving you an idea right now because we could, we could actually, even if the instant water heaters don't last as long, uh, we would still be able to buy two or three of them for the price of one. And there's only one water heater in the United States right now that can find.
Has the status of the one that is going bad, has it got any worse?
It's, it's leaking, I don't think it's got any worse.
It's kind of just staying for current time? Okay.
Would you say you table it to the next meeting?
If we don't ask for a motion, it'll just die, so, you know, it'll be, it'll be good till the next meeting.
That way, if it's tabled, I can't do anything with it, or me and Mr. Ball can't do anything with it. If you put it on the table, then it takes two-thirds majority to bring it back, if my memory is right. And whereas if it, if something breaks, then we can be able to try to go forward.
We just don't make a motion, though.
Yes, let it die of support there and...
Next.
All right. Next order of business, uh, the Spencer Convenience Center. It was brought to the board members' attention that the convenience center is in need of having the garage doors repaired or replaced, as well as purchase two pedestal fans and one window AC unit. Motion was made by Terry Hodges to start getting bids to have the doors replaced, or excuse me, repaired or replaced, seconded by Terry Hickey. And motion was made, excuse me, motion was then made by Tabitha Denny to proceed with purchasing two pedestal fans and one window AC unit for the workers inside the recycling center, seconded by Terry Hodges. Roll call with all members in favor.
The two fans are in place right now. I don't have the price on the air conditioner yet. On the roll-up doors, everyone should have a price in there. There's two different doors right there. One is for a chain pull-up, and then the other one is for a motor. And that's the cost of one, which is twenty-three sixty, I think.
Twenty-three fifty.
Twenty-three fifty, okay. I don't have my list with me, so I'm just going off the top of my head there.
And they're not, we're requesting non-insulated?
The rest of the building just got that shallow insulation on it. It's all it's got, so, I mean, that'd be up to y'all to decide which... I was just trying to get something that was going to be workable for them.
Old ones ain't insulated.
No, the old ones is just that thin roll-up, and he said you spend more money. If something happens to one, one section of this door, he can change it out. Or that with the roll-up door, if it's hit again, uh, you have to change the whole thing out. His recommendation was, was, was this here.
If you don't notice that, that the bid that's got the opener on it says that's a sectional door, and the other one says it's a white insulated coil door. You know what I'm saying?
Sectional would be a lot better.
The sectional would be, yeah.
Free to take it out and...
That's what the ambulance service has, that you have to replace sections of, because they get hit.
I'll make a motion to approve the sectional door.
And I'm going to second it. The twenty-three fifty?
Yes.
Yes.
I just want to be sure.
Times two.
Huh?
Times two.
Times two.
Times two, yeah.
That's the only people you can get to bid on it, David?
That's the only person that I knew right offhand, but I will be going to a meeting tomorrow that they sell those doors, so... I don't care a bit to ask them. I'll ask them home there to have something to compare with.
Need to second on that? Who second?
Hodges. I checked five different places, and that place was the cheapest whenever I purchased mine not long ago.
Well, the, apparently the daddy gave us the bid price on this because the son, when he handed me that paper, he says, I don't know what's happened here, but he said, we usually don't sell them that, for that price.
We won't say nothing.
No, I'm just saying he was...
So go ahead and order those in the window AC.
Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kell Crane.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Maple.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carried.
Yeah. Ready?
Yeah.
Uh, next line would be Rocky River Convenience Center. Mayor Sullivan brought our request from the Rocky River Community Center to ask the board members if the county would help pay a portion of the water bill at the center in the amount of thirty dollars a month. The Rocky River Convenience Center is next to the community center, and the workers use the center's bathroom while at work. Motion was made by Terry Hickey to pay the thirty dollars and seconded by Jordan DeLong. Roll call with all members in favor. Make any questions?
Yeah, I do. Are they going to send a bill? Because I got to have something.
I told them they would have to send us a bill for thirty dollars.
And that was my next question, was how the auditors are going to feel about it as far as, so they would have to send an invoice for...
Oh, they've got to send us a bill. I told them if we didn't get a bill, we couldn't pay anything. You know what I'm saying? But if we put a porta potty down there for him to use instead of the building, that's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month.
Would it not be just easier for you to calculate that thirty times twelve and pay them in one lump sum? It would, um...
If they ceased to exist, though, that, that'd be a problem too.
I mean, I know it's a community center, but my thing is, you know, we have a container down there for that community to be able to take their garbage to them instead of them having to drive any further up the mountain. And it is, I mean, it's thirty dollars a month. I just don't see...
But they're having to pay seven dollars a month on the electric bill, right?
What, the community centers? No.
Citizens.
And the citizens in the community.
Citizens do, yes. Community centers don't. They're white, they're...
Yeah, but that don't matter. We need the convenience center down there, and he needs the water in case anything happens.
Keeps us from having to put a bathroom down there.
It saves us money.
Chandler made the motion.
I'll second.
Can I ask who talked to the community center? Who is it?
Boyd. Mr. Boyd, Steve Boyd. Steve Boyd was the one that came and asked me to bring this in front of the board.
More questions?
Y'all want to do it monthly? You want to do it yearly? I would do it a year. Saves you less headache, and if something happens, they cease to exist, then we donated them three hundred dollars. I mean, I don't, I don't know what else to...
Does he need to pull the motion? Pull his motion? Howard says yes.
But he made the motion to do it before he said what we're saying, I mean, thirty dollars a month, you need to reword it to...
Want to restate it? Put it to pay for a year? Word it out, buddy.
Motion paid by the year.
I'll second.
Everybody understand what we're doing? Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kell Crane.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Maple.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Tommy Freidy.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carried, and that will say, Ms. Clerk, three hundred and sixty dollars a year.
Uh, next line would be the Lane Funeral Home. Mr., huh?
Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. David Chandler from Lane Funeral Home is requesting the help from the county to help the funeral home pay for cremation of unclaimed bodies. The board requested to get pricing and to see if the City of Spencer will assist with paying a portion. So it's kind of dead, but I figured I better put it in there.
I will say, I talked to Bledsoe County Mayor, and they do do that. He said he's only had to do one.
Well, we got two funeral homes too. We can't just do it for one.
We do, yeah. Yeah, I mean, any, I would say, you know, any, uh, uh,
Any unclaimed.
Unclaimed body of the county, you know, I mean, but...
Funeral home.
Right, but I mean...
I feel like we need to solicit bids for cremation because, uh, what he quoted, uh, I believe we can get it cheaper.
Okay. We can, you know...
Well, we're just going to table it until he brings it back.
What I'm saying is when that, yeah, I'll agree with you. All right, that all the county, uh...
That meeting was adjourned. Made by, motion made by Hickey and seconded by Tabitha, all in favor.
All right, Mr. Maple, committee B.
Committee B met July second, two thousand and twenty-four. All members were present except Michael Chandler. Uh, first order of business, uh, is approve fencing area at Piney Convenience Center. Committee B met at the Piney Convenience Center to mark out the new fence to be installed. After we marked the corners, the entrance, exit gates, and area to be fenced, and we agreed upon it, Michael Woodley made a motion to approve it and seconded by Kenny Smith. Well, business. New business, uh, Vamir, which we've already talked about, but Vamir County Senior Center is applying for a grant to add on to their building. The grant is a hundred percent grant. Uh, up to a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the addition to the building would be a twenty-four feet by twenty-four feet with ten-foot ceilings and used as an exercise room. Motion was made by Michael Woodley to allow the senior center to use the grant as discussed if the grant was awarded to the senior center, seconded by Kenny Smith. All members were in favor. Second line of new business. Uh, widening of Brock Lane off two eighty-five, King Creek comes the road was discussed by Committee B. The citizens that live on Brock Lane are concerned about not having enough room on the road when meeting other vehicles. Some of the committee, some of Committee B that are familiar with the road, with the road agree it is too narrow. Have issues with possibly not having enough right-of-way to widen the road, and utilities being in the way of, in the way and having to be moved was brought up. A motion was made by Kenny Smith to table the issue till Committee B can acquire some more information, seconded by Michael Woodley. All members were in favor. Uh, then, motion was made. Committee B meeting minutes.
Y'all get any more information on the...
The road is twenty-four foot wide.
How much?
Twenty-four. That's all the county has right there.
It's very tight, very, very tight on that road.
This issue came up, and I can't, maybe you can remember, Howard, whenever... We had it when I was the county commissioner. They just wanted it wide, when the developer, he was trying to do it, but we told him he needed to get the right-of-way and everything for it, and he never did do anything.
There's blind spots on that road too that are pretty dangerous. I meet a school bus down there just about every, uh, Tuesday morning, so I end up having to back into a resident driveway to get it out of the way.
Yeah. And supposedly, there's a thirty-foot right-of-way, but I come out here a week ago, they can't find it, but they said Randy has it, a copy of the, the deed, the right-of-way.
Mr. Buck told me it was twenty-four foot wide.
They asked if he'd just pave over and pump to the fence. The ditch is, he filled it in with two-inch rock. We give them enough room to get out. I've met the school bus there, and it is unsafe for them.
You'll turn a vehicle over very quickly.
They filled it up with two-inch rock, but they can't pave on top of that from fence to fence?
I would say no, if there's utilities down there, I don't think the utility's going to be...
They're in the field. The main water run from two eighty-five to the subdivision is twenty feet out in the fields. I've been there and fenced and had to have it all marked, so I know where, where they're, they're at on the left-hand side in the fields. It got to do something. I mean, it's, it's pretty, pretty bad.
We try to have a meeting with, uh, Randy and see what we can do, see if an engineer can look at it, or see what it's going to cost the county. Because I'm sure it's going to come out of our pocket to put that...
Several of them.
There'll be several.
And I don't know, I don't know what the number would be.
One or two that I've talked to said they would.
What do we, what would, what would we need to do? Bring forth the landowners and ask them?
Yeah, that's what he's, but...
The road ain't twenty-four feet?
No.
I bet the road ain't twelve, hardly is.
Road ain't ten or twelve, yeah, it's just...
I'd say...
Well, if they're wanting it wide enough where they can get over and let the school bus pass for them, you know, just enough to get out of the way. I mean, things are healed like he talked about.
If you meet a car, you're, I mean, you're toast.
And I even had a road superintendent tell me they about ran over him putting rock in the ditch down there.
You ought to be in that trash truck and meet a school bus.
Do we need to make a motion on that, Howard, for that to be... That actually needs to go through Committee B since they're over roads.
Don't pass it back to Committee B?
It's a part of your, I don't know.
You need a motion to send this back to Committee B?
That, uh, Dusty Maple did. I need to, I need to second on...
I'll second.
Call him, favor? Prove, all right. Next, uh, number eight, approve. Ain't that just a audit committee?
Yes, we're, we're one short on there, and so he's from the fourth district there, and so...
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking. Somebody needs to make a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Call him, favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Motion carried. New business, Mr. Mayor?
What about the fence out there at the convenience center in Piney? Does it have to be so-so? You know, it's going to be a hundred percent grant, right?
Yes, that part is yes.
Does it have to be so high?
I think we bid it.
Eight foot.
Eight foot.
Eight foot, I guess. Eight foot, I guess. State requirements on them.
State requirement is eight foot.
It can't change compared to what we put in on the grant.
Right.
Footage or anything.
Right, 'cause the state approved it.
So what plans that we sent to them have to be done? Got it.
Where the driveway is on that convenience center, is that the safest place?
Which one? The one that's forty foot wide? Or the one down by the, by the mailbox?
Front one's not, no.
They both have some hazards. I mean, I, I made a suggestion that we put signs up, you know, vehicles entering roadway, but I mean, there, there's, there's hills on each side pulling in or out, so.
But if what got sent into the state as far as footage got approved, then the fencing that Committee B laid out is not the same, right?
No. 'Cause that'd be shortening the, the distance.
But, and don't own unless you go out there and, and take something and put the wheel back on it too.
Wasn't it wheeled out when we sent it in?
It was wheeled out, yes.
So it's eight hundred and odd feet.
But, but see, it didn't have all the offsets in it either at that time, so when you get your offsets coming back in, see what I'm saying, it's gonna take more footage. But on, or on the back side, you know, that, that will make a little appearance, but I don't know it's gonna be that much. Taking off twenty-four, twenty foot on the back side. And then on the front side, it was gonna have to stay the same, 'cause really it was gonna, if you do it the other way, you're gonna have to do three gates.
Wasn't that what the bid was put in?
Two.
Two gates? I couldn't remember. We'll just have to go with the bid and what the bid was put in for, 'cause we definitely don't wanna get in trouble.
The meeting, that is all gonna be just changing the fence, right?
Yes.
That, that's what I told them and I thought, but I just wanted to make double sure.
No.
So we will, we'll still have to purchase another set of gates.
No, they only be.
If you're gonna do three.
If, if we do it the, the way it was laid out the other night, you don't have to have any more gates. Because you've gotta leave the forty foot for AT&T to get in on the front side right there. You've got to do that. I mean, that's, that's gonna be a necessity, even though they've not, I still haven't heard from them.
We can represent us, yes.
Your new basis, Ms. Lisa's had something about?
Uh, I need, uh, approval for three reappointments for the bear board, which is Kel Crane, Terry Hodges, and Kenny Smith, which will be for a two-year term to, uh, eight twenty-six.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Chandler, Chandler, chat second. Call him, favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. You got any more, David?
The only thing that, I need the committee members to go out there, we need to settle for about the gas tanks out here tonight if we can, so that we can get something done. Both tanks are here now, the diesel tank and the gas.
I had some paper, somebody wanted to.
Ms. Lisa Cope.
Okay, come ahead, Ms. Ms. Cope, come ahead. Come on.
Thank you for allowing me to come and speak tonight. Um, my name is Cassel Gallagher Davis. I'm the director of the Children's Advocacy Center. We serve Warren and Van Buren Counties. Um, we are really hopeful on having a satellite office here in Van Buren County, which is something I feel that's been needed for way too long. Um, I've worked with children and families. I started with DCS in two thousand and three. Um, I've been a forensic interviewer since two thousand and five. So the Children's Advocacy Center, the services we provide, is anytime that someone calls in a report of child abuse to the Department of Children's Services and it's considered severe child abuse, that means child sexual abuse, severe physical abuse, they might have witnessed a violent crime, like one parent killing another parent, or even severe neglect like starvation. Um, law enforcement and DCS will call us to do those interviews, 'cause we're specially trained to do them. Um, so, um, the, the thought behind those and the philosophy is that if you have a central place for those interviews to be done by a trained professional, all the other entities come there and they watch the interview while it's happening. That prevents that child from being interviewed multiple times by multiple agencies, being law enforcement, Department of Children's Services, and the District Attorney's Office. Because a lot of times these cases become criminal cases and they're prosecutable. And so we're trained to ask questions that aren't leading and that are legally defensible. Um, so we all come together, we all have different specialties, and we're better able to serve those kids when we're working together as a team under one roof. Um, it would be really nice to have a place here in Van Buren County. We have families that have to drive forty-five minutes, an hour to get to us, and when you are driving with that weight of the trauma that, that family's in and crisis, 'cause they've just found out something terrible that they never imagined has happened to their child, their grandchild, their niece, their nephew, um, and they're having to drive that distance to get to us, it's really hard on families. And I've seen it multiple times over the years. I still remember one of the worst ones that I ever saw and that was in two thousand and nine, and there were six kids. Um, mom was a basket case because she just, she couldn't believe that their father would do something like this to them. And so it would just make it so much better for our families and we would serve them better if we had a place here. We were hoping for the old, um, for the, um, the old library where the Burrit College Museum is now. Um, it's a perfect setup. We already have portable interview equipment so that we don't have to hardwire anything, just in case one day we're not there anymore, we're not tearing things up. Um, that's been purchased and paid for so that we can use it here or anywhere else that we need to. Um, we also provide family advocacy. The family advocate sits with the nonoffending caregivers and they help them with their trauma and the crisis that they're experiencing and they help them find services that they need. And then we have trauma-informed therapy as well. Um, we've already started doing therapy here and we've been doing it for a short time, um, but it would be nice to have one location to do it in. Uh, we have families that their car has broken down on the way to get to us for therapy, or they can't afford to pay for the gas, or their, their transportation just isn't there, they have to get a ride. So we wanna be able to provide those services and be better, do better about it for this community than making everyone come down to Warren County. All of our services are free, they're paid for with grants, so all the families that we serve, um, don't have to pay anything for them. And I've got some numbers here. So last fiscal year, we run on fiscal year, so that's July one to, um, June thirtieth. So this is July one, twenty twenty-three, to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Um, we did two hundred and five forensic interviews and we provided one thousand five hundred and eleven children and adults with family and victims advocacy. We can work with those families until those kids turn eighteen. So if they're okay for a little while and then things start to go downhill again, they can call us, we can start counseling again and we can help them find any other services that they need to help them out. And we also listen to people a lot because they just need someone to listen sometimes. Um, we provided four hundred and thirty-seven trauma-informed therapy sessions. We also work with parents. Um, sometimes we refer them out or sometimes Carrie Farmer is our therapist. If she feels comfortable doing it with both, then she will. That just depends on a case-by-case situation. We've also done Spanish-speaking moms, um, group therapy, um, which worked really well also. Um, then we also do our, our community outreach. I come up here to the, um, Head Start the, a lot. I also do things with the, the elementary school. Um, Sheriff Brock helps me put pinwheels out. We work together also, and so does Chief Gearing. Um, April's Child Abuse Awareness Month, so you may have seen our blue pinwheels out. Those represent child abuse victims because no one knows who they are and that's a way that we can support them. Um, 'cause they're silent about what they've gone through. Um, so our school presentations, um, we put together packets, they're about twenty dollars per person. Um, we have provided, um, those to fifty-one children and three hundred adults. Like I said, we do a lot of pre-K training. In that, we also teach parents not to let anyone tell your child to keep secrets from you, because no one should ever tell your child to keep secrets from you. That's what perpetrators do, so children need to be aware that they, no one should ever tell them or make them keep secrets from their parents. Um, we also do touch, um, we teach about touches, um, depending on age. We do, I'm the boss of my body with, with the pre-K kids, and as they get older, we have other programs that we do with them. Um, prevention and education training, um, through community outreach, um, presentations to fifty-seven children, one thousand two hundred and thirty-five adults. And then we also do darkness-to-light trainings. We do that with all of the constables. Some come from multiple counties, um, and we had twenty-nine of them, and then we also had nine preschool teachers that came and did the darkness-to-light training with us also. Again, it's a prevention training just to teach people how to, um, notice the signs of child abuse, um, how to report it and how to prevent it. Um, then with that said, a total of one thousand six hundred and seventy-two children and adults received prevention outreach training last fiscal year. Um, so all of that equates to a, a forensic interview and family advocacy would cost four hundred and thirty-five dollars. If you do research, that's how much it costs in, um, rural areas per case. Um, when I worked in Rutherford County, it was over two thousand dollars is what they estimated it to be. Trauma therapy is sixty-five dollars per session and then the booklet, the packets are twenty dollars per packet. All of that equals a hundred and fifty-seven thousand five hundred and twenty dollars in savings to our community, not to mention the, the help that we can give to the families. Um, and so we're just asking for y'all to consider maybe allowing us to use that building, um, the Burrit College Memorial Building or the Burrit College, um, museum, uh, the old library. Like I said, it's a perfect setup. It has a place for forensic interviews, has a place for the viewing room on the other side, it has the big room for family advocacy, it has bathrooms, um, and it would also give us a place to do therapy. Does anyone have any questions? I tried to, I might've moved too fast. I was trying not to take too much time.
Does the air work now?
There's no air. The only thing, there's only one unit in that building there, and it's heating air in the air conditioner itself.
We're prepared to purchase a heating and air units if needed. We're prepared to do that with a grant.
I'll make a motion to give use of the, uh, old library to the child advocacy.
Wait a minute, we, we had talked about this. We don't know that we can. Is that right?
No, because, well, maybe you can enlighten us, Howard, and I'm not trying to go into the bus.
Go, go right ahead. I met with, with Ms. Cope and I apologize, Ms. Cope. Friday evening, I believe we met about an hour and, uh, I reviewed all the deeds that the county mayor had provided to me in the past. Uh, it's, it's a really interesting question. The last deed that was made that involves that property was made in nineteen ninety-six. The yarding property was conveyed to Van Buren County, but this, this building, uh, was retained by the grantor. The grantor is described or identified as the Burrit College Alumni Association Incorporated. That organization secured title to the property back in nineteen sixty-four. Deed in nineteen sixty-four specifically contains the following language. It says, further expressly understood that if at any time said Burrit College Alumni Association deed dissolves, the above's got property and all improvements will revert to Van Buren County. That's the language in the nineteen sixty-four deed. But you study the history of the corporation, there has never been a corporation chartered, uh, registered and identified. In nineteen sixty-two, there was an organization, a not-for-profit corporation that was chartered by the Secretary of State's office. Organization is called the Burrit College Alumni Association of Spencer, Tennessee. Entity that is not identified. These, which is an entity that formed or was formed. Here that it was conveyed to the Burrit College. Corporation. Not an entity at all.
Are we on the building?
That's my opinion. You're on the building. You've owned it the whole time.
I'll second, tired of this motion.
Good thing, we've paid utilities on it.
Who would pay the utilities also?
Well, I mean, we've paid them so far, so I said it's a good thing, 'cause we've paid them.
So my, my, I, I don't know who, who now controls or, or monitors the actual existing not-for-profit corporation, the Burrit College Alumni Association of Spencer. I know who's the registered agent. I can find that through access to the Secretary of State's office, but the easy thing to do would be to find out whoever that is and have that individual uh, and an individual they identify as the secretary just to sign a quitclaim deed to Van Buren County. If they won't do that, then we need to file similar to what we had to do at the old jail, um, four or five years ago, six years ago. We need to file a petition to quiet title, publish it in the paper and anybody that has any interest associated with that organization can come in and try to contest our right, the ownership of it. That's a more difficult way, a little bit more time-consuming. Take about sixty days. You have to file it, you have to publish it thirty days, give them thirty days after the publication to respond. So, that's where we are. The other thing we can do, and I would not recommend it, the other thing we can do is go ahead and enter into a lease agreement, uh, with the Child Advocacy Center and, uh, hope that no one from that organization attacks the validity of that lease as we move forward. They may or may not, they may not have any interest in it, but cleanest way would be to get something from the Burrit Alumni Association of Spencer where they convey their interest back to the county. And I suspect they would do that.
If not, can we, can we go ahead and vote on moving forward with that second option if not?
Sure.
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Study it.
To try and contact whoever it is.
They move somewhere, certainly. I, I'm just trying to get title to them and then get a lease agreement. I talked to Ms. Cope too about the type of lease agreement that I would recommend that the county enter into. We have something similar in Bledsoe County where we entered into a, it's about a fifty-year lease agreement and it was to be renewed every ten years. We found out that was too long because your, your commission changes and you need to have some continuity in the commissioners so they know what, what we're doing. So we amended that lease. We discussed a four-year period and a five-year period for it to be examined and renewed. We set it for a twenty-five-year period and ultimately agreed on a, on every four years. It would be renewed because the new county commissioners, new commissioners might wanna have some input on it, but the, the incumbent commissioners would know what that lease was about and, and what we were doing and why we adopted it. And that seems to have worked well for the county since, Bledsoe County since we've made those changes. So that would be my recommendation. You all decide on the term, whether it's twenty, twenty-five, ten years or whatever, and then every four years. And then every four years, uh, you, you renew. Uh, knowing that that's the period that, that you're looking at for them to have occupancy of the building. And, and we can, I can take care of all that. That's just in the drafting of, of the lease, but we need to have a pretty firm resolution on it too. So I, I've said too much, I'm, I'm sure, but I'm hoping I'm answering the questions that you all may have as I speak.
Can I ask, are you set on that building? Is that?
It suits our needs more than, we looked at the old Masonic building.
Okay.
This one better suits our needs as far as the setup. It's just where, it's, it's set up perfectly for having the family advocacy piece. And then the way that those rooms are arranged for the forensic interview equipment to work. Um, and I was gonna also, um. As, as Mr. Upchurch said, like reviewing and renewing every four years. We would also be happy to come and present every year if we need to about how it's used. We can present numbers. Of what we've done with it and things like that, just so that you know that we are using it in the way that we're supposed to. Um, just like any grant that we would get, it would, I would treat it in the same, in the same way. Does anyone have any questions about that?
The utilities being in their name?
Yeah. That's what she said, that they'd pay all the utilities.
Yes, we would. We would pay the utilities.
Are they any place that would suit you in the, the old Burrit College building?
It's all being, um, used. I think the fair committee has it and there's some other things there from what I understand.
Yeah.
It's the building, you said.
Got you.
Is really not an option.
Do we know who is in that organization?
The only, uh, and I did not write the name down. Uh, let me see if I can throw it up here just a minute.
Hey.
Jay, go ahead. Was they not moved to the?
Supposed to be in the process.
Moved yet.
Supposed to be in the process of being moved to the old courthouse.
We don't want to lose those.
Yeah, no.
We're not going to.
Like, we don't want those to be discarded in any way. In fact, we all have moments here to help move them over there if maybe, um, just over there, set in a little place where they're taken care of.
Name I have, the, the registered agent is, uh, Bonnie Adcock. You all may know Ms. Adcock.
We know Bonnie.
So that would be the first one I would reach out to.
She's in nursing and we better hurry.
Is she? She's in assisted living.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Is that the only one on it?
Did you rescind your motion?
I can, yes.
Got two motions on the floor.
Right, we, I hadn't recognized either one.
Jumped the gun a little bit, sorry.
I think that, I think that we understand what you're wanting. And I think that we all agree that it's, it's needed. It's just, it's going to take us a little while to get all these wheels turning.
Yes, sir.
You know, yeah, I mean, do y'all agree?
Yeah.
We've got, you know, we've got some steps we've got to take. Uh, if these people will rescind their motions and we do a little more investigating, you know what I'm saying? I mean, that's.
Well, I think we'd.
What else can we do? You know what I mean?
If she rescends her motion, I'd like to second Woodley's motion to go forward with Mr. Upchurch reaching out to Ms. Adcock. To resolve the issue and hopefully get it all put back in the county's name.
There was a, an individual with the last name of Underhill, uh, before Ms. Adcock was designated as the registered agent.
She's not capable of signing, then what?
Then. We'd have to do the petition to quiet titles, what we'd have to do.
And that's cu- that's covered in my motion as well, the second option.
What if she has a, a power of attorney?
That would work.
There's just other folks who have been working in the absence of Ms. Bonnie with the Historical Society, such as David Cook. Uh, Joe and Joyce Chandler, uh, uh. The gentleman who ran for judge, uh, is, is mother, Sue, Miss Sue Bailey. Uh, some of those folks have been working in the absence of Ms. Bonnie, uh, with the Burrit Historical Society. So I mean, there, there are some people that we can reach out to, to glean the information that we need.
So you said, what, Mr. Wood?
What did Tabitha, you rescinding your motion? Okay. Just want to make sure she said.
Yeah. So Michael Gilman said he wanted.
Mr. Upchurch's first two options, um. The quitclaim deed and if that didn't work, then, um, filing it in the paper.
I second that.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you all very much for listening to me tonight.
Sorry for.
We will attempt to hurry up and try to get that done and get, get you all in there.
Yeah.
We completely understand. We just appreciate your support so much. So thank you all very much. And I gave you all folders with just some information about us. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, I'm the mayor, chairman and, uh, board. Um, couple issues. Um, one, uh, I moved here off Andrew K. Parker, uh, back in April. We started, uh, living here in Spencer. And, uh, we've noticed on Andrew K. Parker coming down from the school and even up from the highway, um, speeds are a little crazy. Um, if I could put like a slowdown sign under the school bus entering highway. Um, something along those lines, just to kind of be a reminder. I know coming down the hill is tough to, you know, break the whole way down, but. If we could try to slow it down, I have kids, well, another one on the way any day, but, um. I just don't want anything to kind of happen on that road and they're traveling pretty fast, so, um, that's the first one. Um, the second is, um, dogs in this county. Um, I live off of Hill Road and Andrew K. Parker, um, since we moved in. Probably five different dogs have steadily come by probably every week, um. None that have been aggressive and only two have ever come on to my property. Um, I talked to Sheriff Brock earlier today about the, I guess, penalties or things we could do on the law side. But, uh, I was wondering if the board would contemplate or talk about or start the process of. A position for like an animal control, uh, officer or a, a shelter. Uh, maybe like a spade and neuter type of resource, um, to kind of quell the problem. That's, I mean, uh, over even by the Mennonite community going down Brockdale, they're sleeping in the middle of the road. Um, I mean, everybody's going to avoid a dog on the road. So now it's an accident and possibly a personal injury, so. Just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention that it's an issue and if there's anything that can be done, I can certainly follow up. I know there's many organizations in the county, um, that are trying to assist with, uh, the animals. Um, and maybe just give them a little bit more support so they can do a better job. I don't know. Um, I'll leave it up to you guys to come up with some ideas. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
That'd be committee B about to sign. Like a, you want like a slow down, hit and drive?
Yeah, slow down kids live here or something like that. Just something where it kind of reminds them as they're driving by.
Children play, yeah.
There you go.
Could we not make a motion now to have the mayor's office reach out to the road superintendent and have a sign put up?
And committee B.
I mean, we're all here though. I mean, we could just handle it now.
What I, what I'm saying, you just need to talk to Randy and see, you know.
You can make the motion.
I mean, you make a motion if you want to make a motion, you know what I mean?
Mama, you want to call them tomorrow?
You're committee B.
I'll make a motion to reach out to Randy and say about getting a sign put in.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Green, you guys have something else?
Yeah, I spoke with Mr. Upchurch at the last meeting, uh, about getting the skylights and repairs done in the jail due to the damages done from the leaking skylights. Uh, we've went through the process of reaching out to the insurance company. Insurance company is not going to reach out to the engineering company to do a lawsuit for them to fix it. So now it's back in our lap. And I spoke with Mr. Upchurch and he said that if we do the lawsuit, we need to know how much it needs, going to cost for the repairs. So I'm wanting to make a motion to start requesting bids or receiving bids for the skylights and the damages inside the jail. Well, where it leaked, they destroyed all the. Well, they, I think they put sheet rock in the holes, did they not? And it's leaked down, it leaks into some of the lights, it's. Which was not had that problem. We hadn't even rained in a while, but.
Times, but can you get me a list?
Can Shannon get a list?
I think there's thirty, thirty skylights. Is that right, Sheriff?
I haven't counted.
Uh, there's thirty, thirty-one skylights or something like that?
Yeah.
All different sizes?
But we need to list that everything.
All the damages and repairs?
Done before we put it out for bid. That way when they call, we can tell them this is, you know, when they come and look at it.
Can we get Shannon do it?
You need a motion for that?
I hope not.
Did Kale make a motion?
Y'all made the motion to start requesting bids.
I'll second.
But Chandler already seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I gotta stay on track. I'm getting lost back here.
If you don't, you're good.
Maybe that is it. You got anything?
More? Yeah.
No, I think that's it. I thought I had another one, but.
You got anything, David, on new bases?
Not only, well, it's, it's actually, I'll just, information only. Is, uh. We got a, a call the other day from. There's a museum, uh, grant that's going to be coming out for a hundred thousand dollars. For the old courthouse there. Hopefully we can get Burrit College to do the repairs on it, but I'm not sure whether it's going to happen or not because it says museums only.
Declare the museum.
Read it, Claire.
Well, the insurance company, you get more, they go back on the people that done the skylights?
The cause of the damage is that the engineers, when they built the place. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think that they put the wind speeds for the lights at sixty miles per hour.
The, the skylights is, the ones were rated at fifty mile an hour.
And we need a hundred and twenty.
Our engineer that we have that, that does their stuff for us was, uh, this area was rated a hundred and twenty.
And they're all covered up with, uh, tarts right now.
I don't know, sue them.
That's why we need to go for a lawsuit.
Are you asking me about it?
Where are we at on getting our money back from Watsons? Where are we at on the Watsons deal? The Watsons construction?
Watsons Family Construction? We still not got in touch with them or able to get in touch with them?
That's the, uh. You, you sent them later, certified later.
Get back with us.
I will.
On, on the.
Wish you'd text me before the bidding.
I didn't, I, I didn't know that. I forgot all about it. I'm sorry. I was drawing a blank on that one. I'll.
Yeah, on the old Masonic.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Just text him, Terry.
I'll, I'll take, I'll text you in the morning.
And what about the garbage truck?
The old garbage truck.
Oh, okay. The old garbage truck. I can't tell you.
You're turning.
No, I, I talked to the fellows that's been fixing it out there at Smart Station.
Chris Owens.
Chris Owens. Thank you.
Go ahead.
And, uh, he said if we could get it down there too, he, he would, uh, he could fix the turn signal.
And the brakes?
And have him check all the brakes out too while he's there.
Is, was that purchased under a grant or was that?
Was that truck?
Yeah.
I don't think it was purchased under a grant because they bought it from BDS.
All bought as a package.
As a package when they bought the BDS app.
Are the brakes good enough to drive it?
It was a package deal for that five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Oh, okay.
Maybe.
This is me, but I, I think we need to get rid of the thing once we get it fixed because it's nothing but a lemon. We've been fighting this thing for two years.
I'm so tired of that truck.
Well, we've already sunk this much money into it now. We might as well finish. Because I mean, we've been left and right. Every time we turn around, something's going on with this truck and, and we've all voted. Over and over and over again to fix it every time.
Oh, it needs to be fixed in order to be over.
We might as well finish it out and get it on the road.
It's one of the good ones. You got to worry about the bad stuff a lot. Sometimes we have good stuff. The whole point right now is I want, well, I'm going to single out Tabitha, I'm going to single out Michael. Single out Sheriff Brock over there. We got a lot of people in this county that are hurting sometimes, but sometimes way more than others. And I had a situation and I brought it up to a number of these people. And they gave me just the right people to talk to. And I just want to thank all of you for the massive amount of work that you've helped to get done out there. Thank you. We have a great local governance.
Thanks, sir. I'm making a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
In favor? Meeting adjourned.